So, the lakefront will be incredibly beautiful. I'd like to thank the Arringtons again and the Senator. So, it was for us a very, very good week. It's only Monday. Who knows what this week will have. That concludes my announcements. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I want to continue on some of that good news and give you and members of the public some more details about two of those items. First, Yvonda Thomas, our Health Director is here. I'd like her to come up and talk just a little bit more about what the FQHC grant is, what it means, and what are the next steps. Ms. Thomas, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Yvonda Thomas, Public Health Director. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, City Clerk, City Manager, Bockwitz. I just wanted to give you additional information. It's still evolving, but I wanted the community to have clarity about what this actually means for the city of Evanston. So, there were over 800 applications in the first round, and we know that 67 of those applications were granted and award funding. And out of 67, only 11 of them existed in Illinois, but two were only in Chicago at the first round. And the first round of possible money to access the federal government or request for a new access point health center was $650,000. When we were alerted that we were approved because we had the right ingredients and the right justification of need, we did not get funding the first round. We were notified by HERSA, the funding body, that we would be allowed to stay in play, keep our application active, that Erie did submit on our behalf in December of 2010 to be eligible for the second round of funding. We were also alerted that that dollar amount would be $250,000. So, I was excited to learn that not only were we awarded out of 215 applicants and only 11 in Illinois, two in Chicago, Erie being the largest dollar amount, we were also told that this $650,000 amount would be granted for every year that the center is operating because they are already an established FQHC. So, not only did we get the full dollar amount requested, we got it, and it's ongoing annual support for the federally qualified health center. So, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And so, what does the federal grant support allow Erie Evanston Health Center, and this is just the name we're calling it until we actually have a name and a location. It's the Erie Evanston Health Center. This budget will allow Erie, our operating agent, who again happened to be the right partner at the right time, we will have primary medical care, which means pediatric services, women's health services, adult medicine. Erie will also provide diagnostic lab tests, HIV and STD screening and treatment, family planning, and urgent care onsite, also have a behavioral health component doing full assessments, individual therapy, and counseling, a oral health unit which will provide direct patient care, preventative, restorative, endodomic services, and emergency periodontal services, also provide enabling services which consist of health education, prenatal classes, breastfeeding classes, nutrition education. There will be a patient navigator, a case managing component, and community health outreach and promotion for the health center in the community. This budget actually will allow us to see about 5,000 dental visits at the end of year one and about 24,000 medical visits. The budget is approximately about $4 million with a $2 million capital initial cost. The location as stated at this point is still unknown. The providers will be eight medical providers and two dental providers. Erie feels like with this federal support that this clinic will be sustainable in our community, and we're excited to, they're excited to come to Evanston. So, I want to thank you for your support, Mayor Tisdale, for you giving support with our legislative officials, City Manager Bockwitz, for the support that you've given the Health Department. It's been two years, and we're glad to say we're happy that the center is coming to Evanston to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonda. And I should mention, since you reminded me, Yvonda, that for two years Senator Durbin and Congresswoman Shikowsky could have told you that Evanston's number one priority was to have a federally qualified health center, and they were both fabulously helpful in making sure that this happened and that this need in our community was met.
Thank you.
And just two final words about this great opportunity. First, another partner of ours, the North Shore University Health System, has been with us and intends to stay with us as we move forward. They see this as a critical component of the services they provide in the community. So, we look forward to working with them to participate. And also, I think it's important to reiterate that one of the main reasons we went after this grant was that this was a model that we could provide health care for our residents without directly costing the taxpayers of Evanston. And so, while we certainly anticipate being involved with helping with fundraising, being involved in the coordination and facilitation of services, this center is not predicated on city of Evanston direct funding. And certainly, we are going to continue to go down that road to ensure that we provide all the indirect support that's needed to make this successful. But there will, at this point, we don't anticipate any cash support coming from the city of Evanston to make this a reality. So, we're very excited about that.
Alderman Grover, did you have a question?
Just, yes, I did. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is also not predicated upon provision of services exclusively for Evanston residents. This center will serve a much larger community than lives within our borders. So, this has impact beyond Evanston even.
Absolutely. And I happened to see the village manager of Skokie on Friday, and, you know, unfortunately, they don't have those, these kind of facilities in Skokie. So, we'll be able to help residents in Skokie as well to come to Evanston and receive these health services. So-
Have you gotten the thank you note yet, Mayor, from Skokie?
It's in the mail, I'm sure.
Next, I'd like to, following up on the Mayor's comments, I'd like to ask Doug Gainer, our Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, to talk a little bit more about this outstanding grant from the state of Illinois for what will now be known as the Arrington Lagoon, and to talk a little bit about what we anticipate next steps to be.
Thank you, Mr. Bockwitz, City Manager, Mayor, Members of the City Council, Clerk Green, Doug Gainer, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services. It's been well over a year that we put together a grant for the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. It's very limited funding. It's federal funded money that's administered through the state. We've had outstanding support, starting with the Mayor, the City Manager, excuse me, Representative Gable, Senator Schoenberg, Mr. Arrington, a very influential individual in our community, also reached out to past Governor Edgar. He reached out to both the Speaker of the House and the head of the Senate, and he got great cooperation and support from all of them. And this is a grant which we have to match. Mr. Arrington was very generous in donating $500,000 to the city for this project, and we're using that $500,000 to match the $400,000 grant. It's a million dollar project, so we'll be coming back for a $100,000 request from the city, which we had previously mentioned to the council in our next go around for the CIP. But we're really pleased because this is another step in completing the long range project of the master plan at the lakefront. This area includes the lagoon area. We're going to be dealing with a lot of landscaping. The stage area, the lagoon itself has been leaking, and we've been patching it every year. So, this will be an opportunity to completely redo that, redo all of the brickwork, the stage area. So, there's a great deal of effort that's going to be put into this, as well as a lot of the mechanical equipment that's also been a problem. So, we feel this million dollar project will really spruce up one of the most heavily used areas of the lakefront. So, if you have any questions-
Congratulations, Doug. You did a lot of work to make sure this money came to Evanston.
Well, thank you, but I want to also acknowledge the staff did a great deal. Stephanie and Paul, Bob, everybody kind of came together to determine the kind of uses we have there and put it all together. And so, the staff did an outstanding job, and we'll certainly relay that. Thank you.
Alderman Fisk has a question.
Thank you. Doug, can you give us an idea of what the timetable for the work will be?
Well, now that we have the announcement and it's public, and we think we will get the money, we're sure we'll get the money, from the state, I guess Marty, that's kind of questionable once in a while, we'll be doing the planning for the next several months on what needs to be done. We probably start construction sometime next, next year, probably. We would, you know, hopefully the beginning of the construction season in April.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Gainer to stay at the podium, and Mr. D'Agostino join him. The next item under Presentations is our annual recognition as a Tree City USA. Mr. Gainer, Mr. D'Agostino, who's going to do the honors?
I think Paul deserves the credit. This is the 29th or 30th year, 29th year that the city's been recognized, and he has a few things, remarks that he'd like to say.
Thank you, Doug. Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, City Manager, I'm pleased and proud to announce, as Doug just mentioned, that we have received the Tree City USA Award for the 29th straight year, so since 1982. There are only 10 other communities in Illinois that have a longer consecutive year streak of receiving this award, and the state of Illinois is number two in the country for the total number of tree cities. So, that puts us right in the top tier, I think, of cities nationwide. The city of Evanston has continued to make improvements to our urban forest program over the past year. Our dedicated staff has been able to maintain our elm injection program by completing 287 injections last summer on all the elms within our parks, with another 241 scheduled for this coming summer on Parkway citywide. Additionally, our staff administered a contractual injection of 2,290 public elms by a local tree company, Nell's Johnson, during the summer of 2011. DED losses were reduced last year to slightly less than 1%, which is better than the manufacturer of the product predicts. So, we're exceeding their expectations. We continue to aggressively scout for symptoms of the disease. We promptly remove infected trees, and the regular injection of all of our public elms, ten inches and larger, has contributed to the success. Forestry staff also in 2011 trimmed nearly 1,400 Parkway trees, removed, I hate to say this, removed nearly 900 trees that were dead, diseased, or hazardous, 600 of those of which were due to emerald ashbore. And we did indeed plant over 400 additional new trees citywide. City of Evanston also received the Tree City USA Growth Award for exceeding the regular requirements for the Tree City USA Award. This is the 13th time we've received that award. The city received this award based on two activities initiated in 2011. The first was the approval, and thanks to all of you, of the new tree preservation ordinance. This ordinance has effectively protected many Parkway trees already from potential construction-related damage. And the second activity that helped us achieve this growth award was our continued participation in regional efforts to slow the spread of emerald ashbore. Unfortunately, we're not making much headway in that regard, but we are still trying. I am convinced that as we continue to work with our federal and state officials, that the city of Evanston will remain at the forefront in urban tree care initiatives. I'd like to thank the Mayor, the City Council, all of you, for your continued support to our urban forestry program, as well as the hard work and dedication of our forestry staff. Neither of these awards would be possible without all of you. And Madam Mayor, I'd like to present you with our plaque.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And there's no one to take our picture. What a nice relationship.
Yeah.
We got out of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, as Mayor returns to the dais, Mr. D'Agostino, I want to thank you. It's been a very difficult time to be in the tree business. All you have to do is pick up the newspaper. All of our neighbors, I think, are a little bit behind us in dealing with all of this, and I think you have provided leadership and have waved your arms in very difficult budget times to have us be as much on this as we can, given all of the various circumstances. So, thank you for that. The city of Evanston's trees are so very important to us, and I think despite difficult budget times, you and your staff have done an excellent job. So, I want to thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Alderman Grover?
Just a quick question, Mr. D'Agostino. The Tree City USA Award is based upon our stewardship of public trees. Am I right?
That's correct, yes.
Just the trees on public property, and we have quite a number of them.
Over 32,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a few more items. Some of you may know the Fourth of July is coming up, and that's a very special time here in the city of Evanston. Joan Duquette, who is the President of the Evanston Fourth of July Association, is here, and I'd like to ask her to come up and remind people that the Fourth is around the corner and to give us some details about the events we can expect to see in Evanston on the Fourth of July.
Great. As the City Manager said, my name is Joan Duquette, and I am President of the Fourth of July Association.
Sorry. I've been saying it wrong all this time.
Oh, everyone does. There's no chance. When other cities and villages are continuing to cut back on their Fourth of July celebrations, I am proud to say that the Evanston Fourth of July Association will be putting on all aspects of the celebration that Evanston has come to expect. On the morning of the Fourth, from 9:00 to 11:00, the Playground Games will take place, followed at 2:00 by the parade, the 7:00 Twilight Concert now being held at Arrington Lagoon, capped off the evening with our lakefront fireworks. In fact, even when other cities are cutting back, we have a few new additions this year that I'm excited to tell you about. First, to expand the celebration to a greater portion of the city, we are adding a Playground Games location in southeast Evanston. We'll be adding the games at Baker Park, which are located at the corner of Keene and Forest. Residents of southeast Evanston should come out for sack races, piating contests, and an egg carry, come out and win a blue ribbon, and have a great time with the family. In the parade, in addition to such regulars as South Shore Drill Team, the Cavaliers, and the Jesse White Tumblers, we've brought back the Red Moon Theater. With our own unique brand of spectacle, part public art, part giant puppetry, the eclectic group has always been a big hit in Evanston, and we're glad to have them back into the parade. One unique feature this year that we found out through the City Manager, you keep your eyes out for a film crew, for the PBS special, they will be filming Constitution Land with Peter Sagal. It is a PBS special to be aired this spring, featuring the host of the NPR news quiz, Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me, that will explore the nature of our Constitution. Peter and his film crew will take part in our piating contest at the Lincolnwood Playground Games, talk to Evanstonians about their feelings about the Constitution, and then take a ride in the parade on his motorcycle, the We the People Harley Road King. The crew will be filming stock footage of Peter and of our residents, and it will appear in the documentary series. So, when the little smiling faces waving flags appear next spring on PBS, they will be little Evanston smiling faces. So, please join us for Evanston's largest civic celebration. If residents need more information, check out our posters, or they can visit our website, which is evanstonfourth.org, and that is fourth with the number four. Thank you very much, and I hope to see you on the Fourth. Thank you.
Thank you.
And perhaps the interesting backstory of that contact was Mayor Tisdale and I had spent an entire day in Springfield, and we were waiting to get on an 11:00 PM Metro train back to Chicago, and a woman came up to the Mayor and said, "Aren't you the Mayor of Evanston?" And she said, "My brother is doing a documentary, and we need to find the Fourth of July Association head." And the Mayor said, "Oh, no problem," and we sent an email to Joan from the train that very evening. So, it's a very small world. Next, I'd like to have Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager, come up and introduce one of our new managers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Clerk Green, Manager Bockwitz. It is my pleasure to introduce our new IT Manager. And in a lot of places, the IT Manager might not mean that much to councils, but this council is very wired when it comes to technology. And I am very pleased to introduce Jose Calderon. He is a seven-year resident of Evanston, and I'm not going to steal any more of his thunder, so he can tell you a little bit more about himself. Jose?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Clerk Green, Manager Bockwitz, it's an absolute thrill to be here. As Mr. Lyons already said, I'm a seven-year resident of the Third Ward. Prior to that, I was with the Nano Technology Company in Skokie, and even before that, I worked for the United Center on a hands-on technical role. So, it's an absolute thrill. I'm looking forward to working very closely with all of you, and I'm sure you will all have my number soon enough. So, feel free to call me directly if things aren't getting done. But I've met the team this week, previous week, this is my second week here, and very technical and very capable staff that you've had here so far. So, definitely looking forward to make some positive contributions.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And lastly, Madam Mayor, with the July Fourth holiday, just a reminder to our residents that there'll be no solid waste recycling or yard waste collection on Wednesday, July the Fourth. All collections of solid waste and yard waste will be one day later during the week. Condominium solid waste and city collector recycling will resume normal schedule as well on Thursday. So, if people have any questions, they're always welcome to call 311. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one form of communications. It's a, I talked to David, Honorable David Orr's office, and those who are concerned with overseas military who would like to vote, they can go online. Those who had a residence before they went overseas, their family who are over there with them, and those who have established their residency while they were here, could also go online, download an absentee ballot, and then send it in. They would then send them a ballot to them wherever they are overseas. As for the, what is it? As for the ranked ballot, the ranked ballots do not occur, will not be used for primary elections, but they are used for the consolidated elections. So, that those will not be ready until the consolidated election, which is 2013 in April. But they will be sooner than that, so they can still acquire their ranked ballots where they can send in the ballot, tell what they want, how they want the people ranked, and then they go from there point. But again, the ranked ballots will not be available until consolidated election. But they can go online and get their absentee ballots as of today. And that's all for this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Grover, had you wanted to say something?
I'll wait till call the words. Thank you.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to motion to take off the table items A15, A16, and A17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, so I believe it is non-debatable. Do we have to vote?
Call the roll.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Aide.
Alderman Tindham.
Aide.
Alderman Grover.
Aide.
Alderman Rainey.
Aide.
Alderman Fisk.
Aide.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aide.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aide.
Alderman Wilson.
Aide.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Due to the number of speakers, there will be slightly less than two minutes per speaker. I'm going to call the first four speakers, and if you will, please follow one another to the podium. First is on agenda items is Betty Esther, Tim Eberhart, Mark Hammergrin, and Mike Vasilko.
Good evening. My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. Before I begin my comment, first I would like to thank the Mayor for coming to the Citizen Network Protection Event of June the 19th, when we had the Honorable Dorothy Brown, Clerk of the Circuit Court of Cook County. They're speaking about child support, and I definitely want to really thank my Alderman and the Director of Family Focus for supporting this event. It was attended, for us, well-attended, and wanted to let you know that it was a success because we did have one family to get her child support straightened out, and she was a grandmother. So, she got it the next day. So, I wanted to thank both of you for coming. I'm speaking on item A9, which is the purchase of the church of 1801 and 1805 Church Street. Purchasing it, you purchase land all the time. What bothers me was on page 262 of 508, when it referenced the use, how this partial of land will be used. Parking lot was suggested, and we didn't want that. It says the property was totaled 16,800 square feet inside, roughly 0.4 acre for a strong gateway development. That word kind of bothered me, gateway development. When we had started talking about different developments coming and everything, one of the city retired developer directors says, "No gateway communities here in Evanston. We should try to avoid those, especially in the fifth ward." If you're going to develop this, there is a plan that was approved in 2005 that was worked on by the neighbors. It was the Greenwood, Green Bay Ridge Church dot neighborhood plan. It was the last plan-
I need you to wrap up because we're pushed tonight. Thank you.
It was the last plan of the communities. You had the southeast, and their plan was worked on, and they developed, but none of the ideas and the dreams and the hope of the fifth ward neighborhood plan has been even looked at. I ask you and beg you to look at that plan and talk to those neighbors. They are still there, and when you get ready to develop it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim Eberhart, and I'm here to speak in favor of your vote for the Dempster Dodge redevelopment area becoming a TIF district. I am a resident of Ward Two. I live on Lake Street with my wife and three children, just two blocks north of the Evanston Plaza. I'm also a member of this year's Leadership Evanston Signature Class and was part of a small group that decided to focus upon issues of socioeconomic disparity in the Evanston community. And we chose to focus on the Evanston Plaza with the recognition that a revitalized plaza would mean a great deal for the vitality of the entire West Evanston- would mean a great deal for the vitality of the entire West Evanston community. In particular, we focused on attempting to empower and give voice to West Evanston residents in terms of developing a vision for that plaza. And so we put together a survey, disseminated it throughout the community, and had over 183 responses, over one-fourth of those from Ward Two. We held a town hall meeting in April, had over 30 residents come out and spend several hours dreaming and envisioning about that plaza. Now, I'd love to share with you the findings from that, but let me convey how strongly West Evanston residents feel about the revitalization of that plaza for a community-oriented space that would serve the needs of West Evanston. I do want to share with you the vision that the Leadership Evanston Group drafted in light of the survey responses. The vision that many in the community share for the Evanston Plaza, especially those who live in the surrounding neighborhoods, is of a genuine public plaza, where friends, families, and neighbors gather for shopping, dining, entertainment, and civic engagement. Toward this end, a majority would like the plaza to be more walkable, bike-friendly, and accessible to neighboring residents, and for there to be significantly more urban green space with features like benches, tables, playgrounds, a fountain. Many would also like to see--
I do need you to wrap up.
Many would also like to see a reduction of fast food, payday lending, and big-box establishments, and an increase in community-oriented, healthy businesses and social services that are tied to and committed to the people and character of West Evanston. So the Leadership Evanston Group that focused on this for over five months, surveyed many of the residents of the area, strongly urge you to identify the Evanston Plaza as a TIF district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Hammergrin. I'm at, live at 1129 Sherman, and I'd like to speak about A10 and A11, which concern me strongly, as I'm considering hoping to buy that property at 1131 Sherman. I moved to Evanston a year and a half ago. I bought my first home at 1129 Sherman. It's a cute yellow farmhouse, and for this reason, I am very, I have a strong interest in what goes on at 1131 Sherman right next door. And this is an opportunity that I, my fiancee and I felt we couldn't pass up. It gives us a possibility in the future that we might add on to the house if we have a family, and, well, I just wanted to see we look forward to, well, continuing to be good neighbors, and wanted to provide a face to that, those agenda items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was under two minutes. Congratulations.
My name is Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue. I'm here to speak in favor of Resolution 51R12, authorizing the city manager to execute a letter of understanding with City Lit Theater Company. A number of citizen volunteers and a consultant team have been working very hard to produce the engineering and architectural drawings for this, what I believe is a wonderful project. City Lit will be a huge success in Evanston, and I am very proud to be associated with the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Jack Siegel, Elliot Zation, Brian Pastor slash Terry McCabe, and Bea Rashid.
I'm Elliot Zation, 715 Asbury, and I'm going to speak to this. Jack Siegel was expected to be here, and in his stead, Diane Thodos would like to speak after me. So we're both speaking on this issue of the RFP for a banking transfer. I think it's item A5. A number of us met with the city manager about a week ago. He came out to Fountain Square and spoke to us and listened to comments from residents of Evanston about this issue. It was very clear that he was listening, and he said he would bring back to the council in his recommendations, the least suggestions that were being made by Occupy Evanston. I'm not speaking formally for that group, but I wanted to make the council aware that there is serious citizen interest in seeing that funds of the city are moved to wherever possible, moved to banks that are local, and have the interests of Evanston and Evanston residents at heart. If you look at the criteria, and I don't know if those have been shared, and I'm not going to go through them, you could almost take what Chase Bank, which the city banks with, take the characteristics of that bank and do the negation of those, and you'll have the criteria for the RFP. It pretty much lays out the notion that the kinds of things that Chase is involved in just are not the kinds of things we would like to have the banks we bank with doing, including investment banking as opposed to commercial banking. The Occupy asks for a bank that will make a moratorium on foreclosures. You don't hear Chase and the other big banks talking about that. I won't go through the list, because Wally has the list and will distribute it. So you might be asking yourself, okay, why are citizens concerned about this?
Mr. Zation, you need to wrap up, please.
I will.
Thank you.
Two major reasons. One is, we want the city to put its funds and banks that are, that invest in Evanston, and it's not clear that Chase does, and that have Evanston's interests at heart. And secondly, we feel that there, this cannot be business as usual. Chase and the other five big banks wreaked havoc on millions of Americans through their manipulation, financial manipulations, and I think what we're asking the city is to say, "Don't, this is not business as usual. We don't want to support banks. We don't want to put our money in banks that really have no concern with local residents." And I won't go into the problems, but you know about foreclosures and people without work that have been affected by what these banks did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Diane Thodos. I'm with the Occupy movement that's been active on this issue regarding our tax monies being invested in Chase Bank. And I'm here not only to be part, as a representative of what this movement represents, but also a previous protest that occurred in Evanston that happened back in around 2003, where we were protesting the close of the Evanston Hospital incinerator, which did go through, as you know, and I could actually note there was cleaner air after this. It was a wonderful populist, sympathetic movement that all of Evanston, that we contacted, joined in. I want to say we became a model community on a national scale at that point. Evanstonians may not know about it, but our movement ended up changing state law. State law ended up being an example for national changes, and right now, we could be a model community as well. And this movement to try to move the tax money, which the overwhelming amount of citizens we've talked to have found a very negative, a negative sign that our tax money is involved with Chase, that we have to, once again, try to stir up the roots of our model community aspect. We, Wally was talking about how we're now getting wind power as the possibility for having energy for the whole city, which is another great model community aspect. There are other communities throughout the nation, in Buffalo, Portland, Colorado, that are moving monies from these large banks into smaller community banks. There's talk of the creation of public banks. We're right at a crook where we could become, once again, a nation's leader as a model community for these kind of progressive changes which are absolutely necessary. I'm working with Occupy on very pragmatic terms to have our city reconsider pulling the money out of Chase and putting it into the local banks, which would give us, I think, a great deal of national prestige in joining these other communities and movements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Brian Pastor. I'm the Managing Director of City Lit Theater. With me is Terry McCabe, the artistic director. We just wanted to take a moment to express our continued enthusiasm for the 727/729 Howard Street Project, and to help, you know, with the continued economic development of that region. We just wanted to make ourselves available at Alderman Rainey's request to answer any additional questions you might have about our progress in the project, and also to express our continued thanks and enthusiasm for the project, and looking forward to continuing negotiations with the city.
Thank you very much.
I'm Bea Rashid, and I'm speaking in front of people all the time, but a little nervous to speak in front of you, but I'm here to speak in favor of the TIF district at the Dempster Dodge Mall. I've been in Evanston. I've lived here for 25 years. I've had a business here for 18 years. I'm the Director of Dance Center Evanston, and we've grown from 80 students to 800 students in the last 18 years. We were originally downtown Evanston at 610 Davis Street, and after looking for five, six years for space, we finally relocated to the Dempster Dodge Mall, and I feel in many respects have sort of brought some new, fresh, wonderful vitality and energy. I've been there. I have worked with Joseph Freed. I have worked with Forsight Management, and now, for the first time, I actually feel like there's a landlord that I can pick up the phone with, and he will answer my call like that. I've never had this experience before to this extent at that space. I feel that all of our students, all 800 of them, and their parents shop at Dominick's all the time. I have eaten so many meals at Pinino's, it's not even funny. We need energy in the West Village. We have a new business district called Evanston's West Village, which is a group of us that are meeting regularly now to sort of revitalize the energy on the West Side. And the person who addressed earlier, boy, I would love to see more green space, parks, places to sit there, and really bring energy to that area. I feel like we are very much of a community center. We have so many children who take classes, as well as adults who take many, many different kinds of classes. And I think giving Bonnie Management Group the possibility to revitalize that center and bring more businesses in would be a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have citizen comment on non-agenda topics. Before that takes place, I would like to say that citizen comment is an important part of council meetings. We welcome comments from all citizens, and we encourage the expression of different opinions and viewpoints. Comments from concerned citizens are another reason that makes the city of Evanston a remarkable place to live. In terms of the Kendall matter, the city's Board of Ethics concluded its independent investigation and determined that there was not a conflict of interest regarding the Kendall matter. Pursuant to Council Rule 64, that matter is concluded and is beyond the jurisdiction of the council. All further redundant comments made on this subject, made by any speaker, will be ruled out of order. No further redundant and duplicative comment, such comment which has gone on for over 16 months, will be heard on the Kendall matter at this or at any other council meeting. This ruling is in accordance with the council rules, the holding of the U.S. Supreme Court in Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association, and Section 206G of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Lastly, all speakers should keep in mind that the tone of comment should be civil. Thank you, and the next four speakers are Dan Coen, Joey Rogers, D.R. Cannon, and Mike Vasilko.
My name is Dan Coen, and we have two teenagers at home, and I would love to use that redundancy rule in our house, if that's all right. That's a great idea.
I'll give you all the legal.
I've been living here in Evanston for 20 years, and I'm so glad. I love our city, and I love everybody that I have met in our city. I am a privileged white guy living at 827 Monroe Street these past 20 years. I wanted to share with the city, if I could, that I've taken some time over the past few months to help my local Ridgeville Board and Southeast Evanston neighbors to seek collaborative ways to bring peace to Reba Park at 707 Reba Place Street. At this time, I am seeking help from you, my civic leaders, to join in this peaceful journey. I am sorry to say, I am saddened to report that not everyone in my community, according to my watchful eyes, are not being afforded a seat at the discernment table and some of the decisions being made in my neighborhood. It is my experience and understanding that a small group of Ridgeville Board members and administration and neighborhood watch members appear to be practicing institutional racism and exclusionary membership procedures that are stifling my African-American neighbors, friends, and family. I truly believe, and I truly hope, that no one is doing this intentionally, but that the net effect from this 55-year-old is all too familiar. This is unacceptable. In every fiber in my body, in my mind, in my heart, I know Southeast Evanston can do better than this. I fully trust my civic leaders, and my neighbors will join in shaping a peaceful win-win solution to making Reba Place Park and all Ridgeville Parks a wonderful gathering place for all. Although there are millions of reasons why I love living in Evanston, her deep, culturally rich community is at the very top of my list. It is this love that fuels my desire to widen the problem-solving tent stakes. In closing, I want to say that the board members themselves are not racist. That's not what I'm saying. They're good people. Patrick McCourt is here, a servant who's volunteered on the park board for 22 years. He's a good man. Everyone, in fact, that I've come across these last few months are good people. But I think we could use some help, maybe from our Human Resources Committee, to help us learn how we could do some racial reconciliation and education, not only in the park board, but in our church community. I'm from Reba Place Church in our neighborhood. In particular, Sean Kroger, one of the basketball players, is back here, and I've known him since he was two.
I do need you to wrap up.
I will, but I got to give a shout-out to Sean. He learned basketball at Reba Park. He was a star, all the way to the state for ETHS on the varsity team. Just graduated, full honors, from Boston College on a scholarship, all four years. He's a good guy, and I want people like Sean to be part of what I'm talking about in problem solving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joey Roger. I live at 1730 Hinman Avenue, and I stand before you tonight simply to express appreciation to all of the members of the city council, to the mayor, to those who are elected, to those who work for our city, for the time you spend listening, responding, getting answers, solving problems. I'm grateful for your care for our entire city. I'm grateful for your expertise, for the arcane issues around which you wrap your minds, that your decisions may be the best for us all. I'm grateful for your patience. I'm grateful for your diligence. My congratulations on the new health center, on the viaducts, on the lagoon, on all that you do for all of us. I'm here tonight to simply say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
My name is Douglas R. Cannon, C-A-N-N-O-N, and I have two of my legal clients here with me tonight, Dr. Padma Rao and B.K. Rao. And Madam Mayor, we take real exception to your ruling. It is contrary to the following case law. Hanson v. Bennett, Seventh Circuit, United States District Court here in Cook County, 948 Fed Second, 397, a 1991 case. There, the mayor was held in violation of 42 U.S. Code, 1983. Furthermore, Vigara versus Waigun, 4590 Fed Sup 1024, 2008 case. The mayor there was held in contempt, or in violation of 42 U.S. Code, 1983. Unfortunately, so was her police chief. Sorry about that, chief. That's important for another reason. The Verara case says, "You who stand silent in the face of such-- The Verara case says you who stand silent in the face of such misconduct are ratifying that misconduct. There are three lawyers, as I understand, or three people with law degrees, excuse me, on this board. I would suggest you do independent research. Two other last cases, Snyder versus Phelps, 131 Supreme Court 1027, handed down in March 2011, and Brown versus Entertainment, handed down in June 2011. 131 Supreme Court reports 2729. I would suggest a thorough reexamination of this case law and your conduct and your policies, Madam Mayor. My clients have their rights and their rights are paramount to anything. That's what these cases stand for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Vasilko again at 2728 Reese. I really just have a question because I haven't been at the council for quite a few weeks. Heard maybe some hearsay rumor about already some discussions going on about budget and tax increases and things like that later this year, so I guess I'm wondering if we could get some idea of what the city manager is planning in the way of budget discussions looking forward over the next couple of months with the community.
Want to answer that now, please?
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we plan to have a mid-year budget report to you at your August 13 meeting. We expect to have the budget to you by the middle of October. As we mentioned a couple of weeks ago at the first quarter report, everything is looking positive, and we have every expectation that will continue.
Thank you.
My name's Jack Siegel, I had signed up earlier, I wanted to see with your indulgence if I could still have two minutes.
Go ahead.
I'm with Occupy Evanston, I'm here to speak on behalf of the resolution tonight to move the current $30 million that the city holds in Chase Bank to community banks. Up till today, the city has, through this connection, been allied with the 1%. I would offer that tonight the city has a chance to shift that to being allied with the 99%. In addition, I've famously suggested that I've been emailing Chase CEO JB Diamond in recent days to thank him for all his support for this resolution. As you know, three weeks ago, he announced $2 billion, or was it $3 billion, Chase losses in hedge funds. And on Friday, you know, the New York Times announced that Moody's Investment Service downgraded Chase's credit rating so that the city might also look in terms of fiduciary responsibility, in terms of whether you want to keep your money in Chase. I would add that there's been a lot of support, that we've encountered grassroots from the community for making this move. It makes a lot of sense, whatever the difference in fees might be, to look at the up to 80% of money the community banks are going to reinvest in Evanston, and how that will outweigh any difference in fees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Padma Rao, BK Rao, Sean, thank you Sean, and Junaid Rizki.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman, my comments were approved by my attorney. Your agenda includes claims about a Tree City USA award. I submit that touting this award is a waste of taxpayers' resources when your official actions show a total disregard for trees and their importance to our community. You voted to sentence over two dozen trees to death in one block for no reason. You attack taxpayers who point out the adverse consequences of needlessly killing trees that produce oxygen, remove carbon dioxide, provide shade, furnish homes for songbirds, and serve as living links to our history. You try to silence taxpayers who ask you to comply with 617/6 of the city code, which requires that existing trees shall be preserved in place wherever possible. Some of the trees at Kendall are centuries old.
Ms. Rao, as you know, the trees at Kendall are not part of the city's.
But they have no voice to defend themselves.
BK Rao, 2246 Sherman, my comments were approved by my attorney. My comments are also backed by facts that I gathered from city documents, newspapers, and books. Fact, the Kendall plan involves killing over two dozen mature trees for no reason.
Ms. Rao, as you know, the Kendall matter is no longer before the council, so please refrain from commenting upon it.
The Kendall plan also involves pedestrian safety issues because the proposed building dumps traffic into both parks, the narrowest street in the area.
Hello, hello, everybody, thank you for having me. My name is Sean Kroger Key. Basically, I'm just here to talk about what's been going on at Reba Park. I grew up on Monroe Street, Seward Ave, and Brummel, basically my whole life. I mean, I learned to play basketball at Reba, basically as I'm sure a lot of other people did as well. And it's basically just sort of, I mean, I've been in college for the past four years, I just graduated from Boston University, not college, just to get that clear. But, yeah, but, so, to me, it's just pretty, sort of, I've just been confused, basically, what's been going on by some of the, I guess, what I've learned from some of the Neighborhood Watch members about how, you know, they've sort of made claims about people not being from Evanston or not living in the direct, you know, zones that are people coming to play basketball here, and I know one of the courts, one of the rims have been taken down, and I don't know, anybody doesn't really, I don't know if anybody really cares about that, but if you don't have two rims at a basketball court, it's not a basketball court. And it's just, to me, it's just been sort of, just disheartening, sort of to see, you know, that place go down like that, and, you know, people sort of claim that, you know, people are doing horrible things, and there's drug use, and, you know, crazy things going on, when I'm sure there's almost positive there's not been any serious crime there in the past year at all, really. So I'm just, you know, sort of just wondering what's to give here, and I just hope that, you know, everyone can be included in this redevelopment plan of Reba Park. I really don't think everyone's voice is being heard. There's a small group member of Neighborhood Watch, people that are sort of, you know, working with the police closely on, you know, keeping, it seems, what it seems, it looks like is, you know, keeping things close and in boundaries, which is understandable to some degree, but I would hope that everyone's voice can be heard in this matter, all members who, you know, attend the park. So I just hope that this can get moved forward a little bit closer and everyone's voice can be heard here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Junaid Rizki, I'll speak to the general lack of ethical behavior of public officials and city staff. Last year, this council showed its unethical behavior when it allowed staff to basically distort our tax increase. This is, this really, basically confused the community, highly unethical. Staff members and council members seem to have a total disregard for the law when it comes to civil rights of disabled citizens. This whole issue of moving the service, the public television station into the service building is a violation of the civil rights of disabled citizens, very unethical and also illegal. You're happy tonight because you have money for a lagoon pit, I mean, for a lagoon project, but how many years, it's been more than 18 months or quite a bit longer, you never fixed the lagoon pit at that, there, and basically put city employees at risk and put them, really, that's very unethical, what you did there, and not really dealing with that. And then, you know, we sit here and think about a former governor who was selling a senate seat. I look at your proposal to sell the mansion over on the lake, and in that proposal you state you'll change the zoning to whatever the buyer wants, essentially. Is that selling zoning? What is the ethics of that? Do we have a really, an ethical zoning process here? I mean, and then, one council member tonight asked about a real estate sale and whether we're bidding this or not, I found that really troubling. And then, of course, now we're starting to run a TIF we might borrow money on? I mean, none of this, to me, smacks of any ethical behavior, and when you're not being ethical, you tend to cross the line into other behaviors. The city, you know, the final comment I'm going to make, tonight someone said they didn't want to hear citizens talk about bankruptcy. Well, today, I believe today the government changed, or there's a government accounting standards office. This city is in $88 million in debt, but if those standards have been changed, as was issued, outlined in the Wall Street Journal on Saturday, I would suspect the city is now over $1 billion in debt. So I think some of you need to think about this as you start to look at what's about to happen here as we go into the budget season, which Wally did not, basically, when I asked the question, he was supposed to answer, about what would be our effective tax increase, he didn't want to answer it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizki.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, just to be sure, we do not anticipate being a billion dollars in debt.
Thank you, City Manager. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda is as follows. First item is approval of minutes, the regular council meeting, June 11, then the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 18. Next, the Administration Public Works Committee met tonight and asks your approval of the Evanston payroll through June 3 in the amount of $2,577,994.87. The Evanston bills through June 26, the amount of $3,936,198.81. The committee asks you your approval to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for an engineering study for a water supply transmission main to potential new wholesale water customers with MWH Americas in the amount of $149,800. Funding for Evanston's portion of the agreement in the amount of $21,400 will be from the water fund. Evanston Partners in this study will reimburse the balance of the funding. And just for information, the partners here are, include the Northwest Water Commission, the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency, the Village of Niles, the Village of Lincolnwood, and the City of Displanes and the City of Park Ridge. Next, we ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2012 water meter purchase to Badger Meter, Inc., in the amount of $64,090.10. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a contract for the last six months of fiscal year 2012 fuel purchases in the amount of $500,000 from Palatine Oil Company Incorporated. This is the Northwest Municipal Conference bid winner for all grades and types of fuel that are utilized by city vehicles. Committee asks your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a contract with infrastructure management services in the amount of $139,708.50 for pavement condition evaluation and right-of-way asset management. We ask your approval of emergency repair work in the amount of $23,785. The manager authorized this on June 13 for the northeast chimney at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center to PBR Chicago. Next is approval of a contract for purchase of one replacement engine from Pierce Manufacturing for the Evanston Fire and Life Safety Services in the amount of $578,238. We ask your approval to purchase street furniture items from Landscape Forms in the amount of $227,689. Funding is provided by the Washington National TIF in the amount of $118,689, Howard Hartree TIF in the amount of $22,185, and from the General Fund Street Maintenance in the amount of $7,830. The committee asks your approval to authorize the manager to execute a change order, number one, for a one-year extension with Third Millennium Associates in the amount of $17,827.98 to provide utility bill printing and mailing services at the same prices, pricing as obtained in June 2009. The council is requested to authorize the city manager to distribute a request for proposal for banking services. These services will include all payroll accounts payable and optional investment services. Next, we ask your-
Alderman Rainey, would you take A6 off, please?
A6, okay. This is the public art purchase, yes. A6 is off the agenda, consent agenda, and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, we ask your approval of Resolution 50R12, which authorizes the use of motor-fuel tax funds in the amount of $300,000 for the 2012 additional MFT street servicing projects. The committee asks your approval of Resolution 51R12, which authorizes the manager to negotiate and execute a second letter of understanding between the City of Evanston and City Lit Theater for consideration of a lease-to-own agreement at city-owned property at 72729 Howard Street. The second letter of understanding extends the time allowed for the city to negotiate exclusively with City Lit Theater. This is for action. We ask your approval of Resolution 52R12, which authorizes the manager to execute a contract for the purchase of real property located at 180105 Church Street in the amount not to exceed $127,000 from E-Town Community Ventures LLC. For introduction tonight is a recommendation that you adopt, Ordinance 63012, which authorizes the manager to negotiate the sale of a city-owned vacant lot located at 1131 Sherman Avenue in Evanston to Mark Hammegren. Secondly, complimentary ordinance is Ordinance 64012, also for introduction. This directs the city manager to execute a real estate contract for the sale of city-owned vacant lot at 1131 Sherman Avenue in Evanston to Mark Hammegren. Next, for introduction, is Ordinance 67012. Committee recommends your approval of this ordinance for the fiscal year 2012 bond issuance totaling $16.22 million. This is a bond, the bond sale date, which is tentatively scheduled for July 10, 2012. Reminder, it's for introduction. Next, the liquor commissioner recommends adoption of Ordinance 68012, amending subsection 356C of the city code 1979, is amended to increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from 29 to 30 to permit issuance to Monterra Restaurant Group, doing business as Terra, 2676 Green Bay Road. This is for introduction. And Madam Mayor, I'm going to include a suspension of the rules in the consent agenda for this item because we're all voting unanimously anyway, and that way the chairman of the committee can address action.
Okay.
So I move, I also move suspension of the rules on this item, and it will be further addressed by the committee chair. Next is Ordinance 65012, which amends portions of Title III hotel motel tax. We recommend adoption of this ordinance, which is, I guess, more or less a housekeeping ordinance, but it simply provides for hotel taxes be deposited in the city's Economic Development Fund as opposed to being sent through the General Fund. This is for action. The next three items, are they all on the consent agenda? They are not. So should I remove, and I'm looking at you all, 15, 16, and 17 from the consent agenda? They are all related TIF ordinances. Well, I think 18 is a little different, but I can remove that, too. Okay, I'm leaving them on the consent agenda. Alderman Wilson?
18 also.
18 also, okay. Items A15, 16, 17, and 18 having to do with Dempster Dodge are removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Planning and development did not meet this evening. Under the Rules Committee, which is also a standing committee, the committee and staff recommend council approval of Ordinance 66012, amending the city code Title II, Chapter 14, relating to Utilities Commission. This has to do with various responsibilities- This has to do with various responsibilities of the commission. This is for introduction tonight. With that, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
I second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. Seeing no one interested in further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris is not here. Alderman Holmes?
Yes, I'm already there.
Congratulations, thank you.
I think she planned it like this, my mayor. A6, Resolution 28-R-12, authorizing the city manager to sign a City, to sign a City of Evanston Community Public Art Program Agreement with Crowvenic and Bro Art and Design LLC for the artwork at the Sherman Garage. I would move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked for this to be removed from the agenda because I intend to vote against it for very specific reasons. The first one is that a certain amount of money, as we all know, is a portion to the creation and installation of public art. And I agree with that. There was a significant piece that was installed, it's called "The Ring," at the corner of Sherman and Davis. And the, this installation was going to use $85,000 that was saved from that installation and applied to this piece of, piece of work. So my first objection really is more of a question, and that is, when we're saving money, it doesn't necessarily mean we need to spend that money. And because we installed a significant piece of work, as we were required to do, at that location, it seems to me that we could save that additional $85,000. Now, if you don't agree with that and you think that that $85,000 could be spent on another piece of art, which is what apparently is happening here, then my suggestion is that it be a significant piece of art, not just a fill-in. And unfortunately, I've come to the conclusion that, that the piece that's being presented to us is, while I love the artist, is not the artist's best work. And my suggestion to staff was that we look at the location across from the library where we're actually doing a complete renovation of the Church Street Plaza, where the planters are going to be removed, the sidewalks are going to be removed, and we ask this particular artist to design a sculptural piece for that location. That would be something that, if we want to go ahead and apply the $85,000, which my understanding is now, it's more like $75,000 or $80,000 now rather than the $85,000, that that would be something that would be actually, provide a better public, public art piece than what's being proposed now. I'm concerned that what's being proposed now is going to only be visible to a very small number of people at a very limited time of the day and is, is actually not going to provide the kind of benefit that we're looking for in our public art installations. So that's my, my main concern about this. And I would strongly suggest that we might be better off going back to the Public Art Committee and saying, "Look at the other wonderful things this particular artist can design, and is there, is there something that we could ask him to do for that location across from the library?" Which, if you remember when Suzette was up at the microphone a week or two ago and showed us the plans for that particular location, she included a little sculptural form of a piece of art at that location. That was hopefully going to be this, but we're not going to have the money to do that if we apply the money to this particular, this particular piece of the Sherman Plaza Park and Garage. So that's my concern, and I thought I would share that with all of you, and that's why I'm voting no.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, on the other hand, support this very enthusiastically. I think it is anything but fill-in. This project, I think, although it was designed for a specific area, is beautifully designed and draws in a lot of things that other pieces of, or other types of public art cannot and don't do. I think it'll be highly visible. I think that it will, given it's at the corner, we'll see it from several directions. I think people will make a point of seeing it. I think it'll be, the interactive nature of it will be especially exciting for kids. So I think it will be a very valuable piece, a piece that will be, when all is said and done, very happy to have. And so I'm supporting it. I can't wait to see it installed, and like I said, I think it'll become a destination, so.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And I had previously expressed a lot of the same concerns that Alderman Fisk had, but on balance, I guess we have the Public Art Committee for a reason, and want to trust their judgment and, and go along with this.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was on the committee that selected the original piece of art, and I think it's very significant. And I love this, this, whatever you call it, it's not a piece of art, but I love this display. It's, it's fun, it's, it's light, it's, it's not deep and heavy. However, I agree completely with Alderman Fisk on the issue of the money. I'm going to support this 100%, this case, but going forward, if, if a public art committee saves some money or doesn't, I won't even say saves, doesn't spend all the money on the initial piece, then I see no reason to, you know, scare up some more art and spend money on it. Put it back in the public art fund, and we can do more work someplace else. So I, I agree with that part, but I'm not going to hold this piece hostage because I agree with you on that part. But going forward, and I understand that the, the public art ordinance does not provide for recouping money left over.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for any further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Seven to one.
Seven to one, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, do you have more for us?
Yes, lots more. A13, Ordinance 68-O-12, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses and to permit issuance to Monterra Restaurant Group, operating as Terra, or doing business as Terra. I would move introduction and adoption, as Alderman Rainey have already moved for suspension of the rules.
Second.
Just for action.
Just for action.
Just for action, I'm sorry, just for action.
Thank you. All right, the issue is increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses to permit issuance to Monterra Restaurant Group. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Suspension of the rules.
It's, the rules have been suspended already.
She did it in the introduction.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I need a little direction for A15 through A18, well, at least through A17. Do we do that as one, or do we have to do them individually? Individually?
I guess from my comments, it relates to all of them as a group, so maybe, I just have a few things to say, and I'll say my piece and move along.
Individual votes, according to our attorney.
Oh, it's okay.
All right, okay.
My sympathies, Alderman Holmes.
A13, Ordinance 55-O-12, approving a Tiff increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Dempster Dodge redevelopment area. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. As I've said before, this shopping center is important to me, it's in my neighborhood, it's where I do my grocery shopping, my daughter takes dance class, I eat the pizza, go to the Radio Shack, I'm there all the time. I want the shopping center to succeed. But it's not so much, for me, it's not so much a question of opposing the Tiff and opposing something happening at the shopping center, but it's disappointment that this is not a specific plan. To me, it's not a redevelopment plan. And to me, what it amounts to is basically a cash stream for a private property owner. The Tiff doesn't give any assurance to any of the residents or anybody in the neighborhood that they're going to have any input or say. I understand that there have been meetings, people have talked about it, people do have a vision, it's important to them, but this doesn't provide that assurance. It allows us to approve things later as we go, but I had higher expectations in that regard. It's been implied that it's going to help specific or existing tenants, but again, there's no assurance. Life isn't full of assurances, but to me, what we have on the table doesn't cross the threshold that makes me comfortable supporting it. With regard to the immediate needs, the preliminary $2 million, those immediate needs are the responsibility of the landlord, the property owner. Tenant improvements, build-out, canopy repair, site work and landscaping, those are things that the property owner who got this property at a, at an auction should be covering. That's maintenance of the property, it's not a redevelopment. It doesn't change the nature of this property. And I want the nature of the property to change and be better. I want the neighborhood to improve. I don't want to paint it, I don't want to make it look a little bit prettier, I don't want to put more flowers in front of it. I want real change effectuated in the neighborhood. And for that reason, for those reasons, I'm not supporting 15, 16, and 17, and 18.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, have, continue to have reservations and concerns about the Tiff for this area. Again, I heard Mr. Everhart, I believe, in the Leadership Evanston process, the visiting process, sounds terrific. I agree with all those things, and I, and I would expect that the neighborhood has similar visions, and I think those are terrific. But what I don't see is, is an excited partner in this. The owner of this property has invested, will obviously make some changes, but I haven't seen anything that would, that would take it beyond the necessary changes to keep this as a viable shopping center, to make it more of the vision of the neighborhood, of the vision that Leadership Evanston came up with. So on that, in that thinking, I just can't, at this time, be comfortable with it, and I think there just needs to be a more, more of a plan, like Alderman Wilson said. He has obviously thought this through carefully, and I agree with the fact that we need a better vision for the site, a better plan for the site.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said at the beginning, I would support the Tiff, but I was concerned about the redevelopment agreement. And I agree with Alderman Wilson that the work that's outlined, the preliminary immediate needs, our work that is specific to the landlord. I think in all other instances, it would be specific to the landlord. So I will support 15, 16, 17, but not 18.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, I think we're ready to vote on Ordinance 55012, approving a tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Dempster Dodge redevelopment area. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Six to two.
Six to two. That is sufficient, I believe the motion passes.
A16, Ordinance 56-O-12, designating the Dempster Dodge redevelopment project area, Tiff District of the City of Evanston, a redevelopment project area, pursue, to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, Ordinance 56012. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Six to two.
Six to two, the motion passes.
A17, Ordinance 57-O-12, adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Dempster Dodge redevelopment project area. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, Ordinance 56012. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Six to two.
Six to two, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes?
A18, Resolution 54-R-12, authorizing an agreement with Bonnie Management for the Tiff eligible expenses at the Evanston Plaza Shopping Center. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Resolution 54, 54R12, authorizing an agreement with Bonnie Management for Tiff eligible expenses at the Evanston Plaza Shopping Center. Alderman Rainey, did you wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, at our Administration Public Works Committee meeting, I asked staff to give us a little enlightenment regarding this proposal, and I thought their information was very helpful, and I'm wondering if those members of the council who were not at our meeting might benefit from that. Because at first blush, I was not supportive, but then I heard the explanation, and now I am.
Which members of staff? City Manager?
I, I spoke to the committee, I'll, I'll attempt to replicate that, and Mr. Zalmasak is here as well. From the discussion that has been held by the council over the last several meetings, we felt it was important to come forward with a resolution to authorize me to negotiate a specific agreement and to set a specific dollar amount. Looking at the potential 23-year life of the Tiff, we believe that an essential portion of benchmark date in the life of the Tiff will be the expiration date of the lease with Dominix, which is approximately eight years from now. So what we are proposing with this resolution is that I be authorized to negotiate an agreement for $2 million worth of improvements that would come back to the council at a future date over that seven-year period, because I think it's important that we recognize that perhaps a year prior to the expiration date of the lease, that there be some additional flexibility for use of the funds. And if you look on your, in your agenda packet, you will see, as part of the communication this evening, a memorandum from Mr. Zalmasak that speaks specifically to the costs that we're looking at for this. There has been discussion here at the council regarding the timing of the Tiff. The Cook County has not submitted the property tax rolls for the 2010 year as of today. We understand that that will occur tomorrow. So if the council approves the Tiff, which you have now done this evening, we're looking at that 2010 base number on page 502 of the agenda packet. So between now and 2020, which we're proposing that we be authorized to negotiate an agreement of $2 million, the Tiff is estimated to generate $3,600,000. We would work with the property owner on improvements, and certainly the comments made here tonight by members of the council are very important comments, and we certainly see the money that would be spent to not be cosmetic, to not be for planting, but for, to make real improvements in the center. Beyond that date and the expiration date of the Dominix lease, I think brings us a considerable amount of uncertainty to the center. We've become very familiar with Dominix over the last several months and their current business practices. They are leaving facilities when their leases are up, and the chain is becoming smaller, their market share in the Chicago area is becoming smaller. When you look at the holdings of their parent company, Safeway, in the United States, they have holdings on the East Coast and holdings on the West Coast. This is their only holding in the Midwest, so much so that their property dealings with Dominix Finer Foods are managed through Safeway Canada in Alberta, Canada. So as we've been trying- So as we've been trying to deal with their Vice President of Real Estate, he is based in Canada. So every indication is that there could be significant change to the center at the conclusion of this lease, and we think it's very important through this resolution to make it very clear that while we want to make investments in the center now, to make it as vital a center as it can be, a very critical juncture will come when that lease is expired. At that point, I think it's fair to say that Dominix could very well leave that center if it is not sold prior to that. And at that point, I think as much dollars as we have available to be able to inject into that center will be very important. With the scenario we're proposing this evening, we would look to come to the council at a later date to borrow $2 million, up to $2 million against the value of the increment, and then certainly as we move forward, that money would be paid back, and there'd be about $1,006,000 in our estimation available in cash at the conclusion of the Dominix lease, and then certainly the balance of the TIF moving forward. So if it made sense either to debt finance, given the circumstances at that later point, we would have the ability to do that. But that's really the important part of this TIF, is the invest in the future, to be able now with the 2010 tax base, to get a very good base year, so that we'll be able to maximize dollars as the assessed value of the center improves, and be able to be nimble with that change. The Dominix that's there is a good store today, offers a lot, but if you look at grocery stores and the market for grocery stores, that size of facility is not something that's being largely replicated. Even in our own community with two Whole Foods, with the opening of the Gordon Food Service Facility just last week, there's changes going on in the grocery store industry. And I think that this TIF and the money that's generated from it in the out years, moving forward beyond 2020, between 2020 and 2036, will be very critical to provide a tool for future city councils to make sure that we do not have a food desert, that there is a grocery store that makes sense in that part of town, but also make sure that the center remains viable going forward. So with all that said, we felt it was important to come to you with a resolution. As we look at other TIFs, and certainly as the council is aware, we're looking at starting a process very soon for a TIF at Main and Chicago. The comments that we've heard through this process have been heard loud and clear. And while the City of Evanston has created TIFs in the past using the model that we brought forward here for Dempster Dodge, we are going to alter that model, so the documents and the plans that you see will take on a different face as we move forward at Main and Chicago. So Alderman Rainey, I hope that captured the sense of the committee's discussion. It's very exciting to move forward, but I think we need to be cautious to balance the needs of the center now, but also be mindful, this is a large piece of property, and the importance to have tools in the future to make sure that it continues to remain a vital piece of the retail environment in the City of Evanston.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This agenda item asks for authorization or approval of the City Manager to negotiate a redevelopment agreement, does not ask for approval of a specific redevelopment agreement.
That's correct.
So there's still room for negotiation, there's still ways to build into this, the contingency about Bonnie Management's continued ownership of this property, perhaps even parallel investment from Bonnie Management in this as part of this deal. So there's still a lot to be worked out. You're simply seeking the ability to negotiate some kind of redevelopment agreement within these very broad parameters.
And Alderman Grover, members of the council, absolutely. And I think the comments that the council has heard this evening and on other evenings from both Alderman Wilson, Alderman Tendem, and Alderman Burris are very true, and I think what we're trying to do is say that we hear the council, that we came forward to you with a model that has been used for the adoption of every previous TIF in the City of Evanston. But time has passed, there are new individuals serving on this council, and this resolution is our way of telegraphing not only to you, but to the members of the community, that we hear you, that we understand the importance of setting very specific parameters on the spending of this money, and that this is the first step to that.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
My question was just about the funding, and you've already answered that by letting us know that it's going to be, we're going to borrow the initial.
That would be our proposal, because the TIF would not generate significant cash for several years.
Seeing no lights on for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll on Resolution 54R-12?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
It's five to three.
Five to three. The motion passes. And Madam Mayor, that concludes the report. Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Then we are at call of the wards, beginning with Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that Madam Mayor and Alderman Braithwaite and I attended the 27th year of the Unity Scholarship Awards yesterday at Second Baptist Church, and I really would like to say to each of you and to our audience as well, that if you've never attended one, you really do need to. It's really wonderful to be able to see the number of young people in our community who are achieving, and the number of organizations that work very, very hard to give them scholarships to go into college, and it's just a wonderful event, and it was just a very pleasant, although it was hot, it was a very pleasant afternoon. Then I wanted to congratulate the Fleetwood Jordane Theater in terms of their latest production of Heat. I don't know if anyone got a chance to see it, but it was absolutely fantastic, and they really do wonderful, wonderful community theater. So the next one, I believe, is Home. So if you have a chance, you need to go and see it. They do wonderful, wonderful theater. And then I wanted to comment on two of the things that were mentioned by the citizens this evening. One regarding 1801 and 1805 church, in terms of it being a gateway, not a gated area. It's a gateway into the, actually into our downtown area. As we tried to redevelop Church Street, we saw that as a part of the redevelopment of that area. So if it said gated, I went back to look to see if I could find it, but I believe it should have said gateway rather than gated. And then also, the young man, the two gentlemen who spoke about race, although it was regarding the Ridgeville. Madam Mayor, I was just reminded of the, your group that's going to be putting on a dialogue, and maybe, I don't know if you want to share that with the community now or not, but.
If I could remember the date, August 8th or 9th?
August 9th, I believe. I'm looking on my calendar right now, but I believe it's the 9th.
We will be having a discussion sort of entitled Know Your Neighbor.
Right.
But it is intended to be about races as well.
Sorry. You know, I'm not very good with this.
I trust you more than I trust me on dates, so.
It is August 9th.
August 9th.
Right.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
In the carousel room.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remind Sixth Ward people and all the rest of the city that there's a Starlight Concert in the Sixth Ward coming this week, Thursday, at 7:30 until 9:00. The entertainment is called Expo 76. They are advertised to meet all of your nostalgic needs as they perform covers of Dusty's and one-hit wonders, two of my favorites. So this Thursday, 7th, this, let me try to see, June 26th, which is tomorrow, at 7:30 until 9 o'clock.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think it can be said enough, but congratulations to us on the federally qualified health center.
Absolutely.
And thank you to every single person who played a role in this, including Mayor Tisdale, Bonda Thomas Wally Bobkowitz, Senator Dick Durbin, and of course, Representative Jan Schakowsky. Second, just a reminder that you cannot stake out your spot for the Fourth of July Parade any earlier than 6:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 1st, if you're looking for a Parkway spot on Central Street. And when you do stake out your spot, please remember not to impede the way of all those delivery people and our UPS guys who have trouble getting past the parkways and on the sidewalks to make their deliveries because of chairs and, I don't know, the ropes that people put up to mark out their spots. So that's no sooner than 6:00 a.m. on Sunday. Thank you.
Sorry, Alderman Rainey.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Grover. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank everyone for their work on the Lagoon Project, including staff, Alderman Nguyen, Mr. Arrington, the entire Arrington family. It's going to be a wonderful project and is just a fabulous addition to the, both the city, but to have a citizen come forward with that kind of commitment and that kind of support is wonderful. So thank you to the Arrington family for that. Thank you to the First Ward member who was here tonight to thank all of us for all of our work. We don't hear that very often, and frankly, it's okay if we don't hear that very often, but for those of you out there, I want you to know that I have complete confidence in every single one of my colleagues here, that we're all trying to do the best that we can and make the best decisions that we can for everyone in the City of Evanston, and I don't think I've known a more thoughtful group of people, and so thank all of you. And to continue on that positive note, the Tree City Award tonight was really meaningful to me. I think those of you who serve on Human Services with me know that we worked on that for almost a year. And when we first realized, and I brought forward to the Human Services, the need for that in comparing with other communities and how far behind we were, it opened up a discussion, I think, that we haven't had for a long time, and I think that's been a huge benefit to the community. And the award is the small part of that recognition that our work to not only recognize our significant trees, but the work that we can do to preserve them, and the tool that that provides to staff in order to work with us to preserve our significant trees is very useful. So thanks to everyone. It's been a very positive week, as the mayor said, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all of the residents for their whole support during this whole process of creating a TIF for the Evanston Plaza. You've attended ward meetings, you're part of the public hearings. I've received so many emails and phone calls, and we even have two residents, Tim Everhart and DeKalb Finer, that are here for the whole meeting. I want to acknowledge the City Manager and the Economic Development staff, if they're still here, for all of their hard work in preparing this and answering some very difficult questions from my fellow colleagues. And as well, I want to thank the Aldermans for your support this evening to get this passed. It will have a huge impact for that area of town, and I know I speak on behalf of the residents, and as I shared before, this area of town really impacts all of Evanston. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to continue to develop that area and make economic development a top priority. I thank Alderman Holmes very much for lifting up the Unity Scholarship Awards recognition this past weekend, and I thank the mayor for her presence there. That was very meaningful. It really was a special event, and I would underscore it, Alderman Holmes had. And if you haven't had an opportunity to be there, it's literally the best of the best from all the black students in Evanston. And it's a wonderful opportunity to address and acknowledge those who made the honor roll for graduating seniors, as well as college students who've returned to the community. So I wish that organization continued success. Just as a reminder to the Second Ward residents, that the second Thursday of each month is we host our ward meetings at the Joseph Hill Center. And I also wanted to share that this Thursday, we'll have a fundraiser that's going to be hosted by Armco and also sponsored by Hecky's Barbecue to help, you know, the continued support for the Grandmother Park Initiative. So there's a wonderful group of neighbors in that area that are trying to take a vacant lot and turn it into a tot lot. So I'd encourage you all, if you're available Thursday evening, I think the time is starting at 5:00, and if not, I'll send that email, forgive me if I get that wrong. And it's another opportunity just to support the park efforts and get behind the residents that are working very hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Before you speak, Alderman Nguyen, I think you will leave out the part where you played a significant role in the Arrington Lagoon Project, so thank you for that. Alderman Nguyen?
Well, Madam Mayor, my significant part was accepting the phone call from Mr. Arrington.
That was good.
Letting him tell me that he was, he would like to make a significant contribution to the city in some form in honor of his father, and then inviting him to a meeting with you, and then saying, "Thank you very much," many times over. And I would like to echo that again to Mr. Arrington and his family. They, without their contribution and all of their efforts, our lagoon really would not be returning to what it was originally designed to be, and it's, this is, as I told Mr. Arrington, he's my favorite kind of constituent, you know. I only hear from him when he wants to donate half a million dollars to the City of Evanston. I also want to thank Senator Schoenberg particularly for our viaducts. Jeff Schoenberg never let go of that issue despite tussling with the CTA powers that be in the past, and I really appreciate how hard he worked on all of this, and I hope everyone in Evanston realizes that, too. The work has gone flawlessly. I appreciate our staff, particularly Matt Swankowski, working with the business people along Dempster. They are thrilled with Matt and his fine work, and all of the construction workers who are working there are terrific as well. I mean, this has been a wonderful project to see move forward and to let people know that we actually can rebuild our infrastructure in our community. With that, I'm going to change directions and talk about rats. We have them in Evanston. I'm making a reference, and I believe it should go to AMPW. In Evanston, if you have a rat problem in your community and you live in a single-family home, the City of Evanston will come out, notify your neighbors, and then bait your neighborhood and get permission from, by property owners to come onto the property to inspect and let you know if there are rats. If you live in a condo, however, the city doesn't necessarily provide that service. You are responsible for your own rat extermination. The city will exterminate on public property. However, as anyone who knows rats knows, they, they're just too smart for us. So in an area where we have a lot of condos, where we really need a comprehensive plan to coordinate baiting and extermination, we really need to be able to act as one, you know, with a single effort. So I'd like to have the AMPW Committee, I believe, look at this issue and examine it, and I've already been talking about it with our staff. The only way to eradicate rats is comprehensively. So with that, Madam Mayor, it has been a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I guess I'm just going to kind of second the Alderman Nguyen's comments on the viaducts, but I'm going to go a little bit further with the rats, because we should look at this and we should follow up with it, but I'd like our press to maybe mention that people should do what they can to not create hospitable environments for the rats.
Yes.
If you're composting or something like that, do it the right way. Do a little bit of research and make sure that you are not leaving things out and creating a very, very happy environment for the rats. We've, in the course of the Health Department going out and looking at some of these trouble spots, a lot of them are living very, very comfortably and very well-fed, and with a little bit of effort from the residents, that would certainly help minimize the problem. Bag your trash, you know, secure it in the carts, just, you know, spend a little time thinking about what you're doing with things to create hospitable environments for the rats, because they are, they're not teeming, but they're happy, and they're making, they're making more. And with that, I'll conclude my report and make a motion.
Thank you.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted, subject to be considered, in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Urban Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A. 120/2A, C1, C2, and C21.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.